Regular meeting of the Mayor and Council of the City of LaGrange. We will begin with an invocation from Reverend Anthony Criswell of the First Baptist Church on the Square to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us and for the many blessings you've already given us throughout the day, and especially the blessings of freedom, a freedom in this country and a freedom in this wonderful city we call LaGrange. We thank you for that, and we thank you for placing each and every one of us here. And we thank you for this evening. We pray that you would bless all the proceedings that happen, bless the ones who are engaged in the process, give them wisdom, give them discernment, and give them compassion, and help them to have clear minds about all the issues that are presented. We just thank you for these moments in time that you give us and you allow us to be a part of. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on April 12th. I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Have a motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. At this time, I am delighted to be able to present a 25-year service pin to Sergeant Gary Atkins of LaGrange Fire Department. I would like to ask Sergeant Atkins and Chief Brand if they would join me at the podium. So if I can, for the benefit of the council and the audience, tell you a little bit about Sergeant Atkins. Gary L. Atkins was born February 12th, 1964, in Juliet, Illinois, to Charles and Shirley Atkins. He has three brothers, Roger, Darren, and Paul. In 1986, Gary moved to Alabama and married the love of his life, Anna, a year later on June 6, 1987. Together, they have three sons, Daniel, Stephen, and Caleb, and nine grandchildren. Gary started his career with the LaGrange Fire Department in 1996. Throughout his career, he has gained many certifications in fire and medical fields. He gained his paramedic in 2004 and was promoted to sergeant in 2006. He has also worked part-time at the Lynette Fire and EMS and the West Point Fire Department. During Gary's time off, he likes playing golf, going to the gym, and playing with his dog, McDuff. Gary is a devoted Christian that has been a youth pastor since he was 20 years old. He now teaches an adult Sunday School class, is a worship leader, and even preaches sometimes. Will you join me in thanking Gary for 25 years? Gary, I've got the pin, and I'll place it on your shirt there, and I'll ask Chief Brand to add anything you'd like to share.
You know, I think about Sergeant Atkins, I think two things stick out is his dedication to his faith, his church, and to the community. He's always been proactive in his church and very active in the community as far as with his interaction with children and all that stuff with the church and in public education in our department. Also, his attitude is second to none. My administrative assistant come to me and said, "I love Gary Atkins." I said, "Yeah, I think a lot of him too." And I said, "What do you do?" And she said, "Well," I asked him, "Why are you always smiling?" And he said, "'Cause I've had a bad job, and this was pre-deck, I'm good." So we just appreciate him. He's just a great employee, he has great attitude, he's always got a smile on his face, and he's uplifting. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Gary, anything you'd like to say?
Yes, ever since I was a little kid, I wanted to be a firefighter. I chased fire trucks on my bike. I chased ambulance, I just loved it that much. And I told God, "Please give me the job of my life." That's what I wanted. And I want to thank the council, I want to thank Meg, all these that have done so much for us, and what's going to be done in the future. I've got five years left, and I'm really proud of that, that I've been on two jobs in 35 years, and that's wonderful. And I just thank God that he gave me my job. And just so y'all know, they make it easier to come to work. All these guys right here make it easier for me to come to work. And John, when I first got here, John was a firefighter just like me. Me and him was on the same ship. And I'm just thankful that I'm still here.
Well, we sure appreciate your service as well as everyone else with the LaGrange Fire Department. Gary, if I could, ask you and Chief to come and take a photo with the council.
Gary, we almost had you promoted lieutenant at the time. We got to vote it again.
Okay, good deal. Let's thank Gary again for his service.
Don't play with the silence when you get out there.
As council knows, we have discussed in some detail the need to redistrict the city's council districts. That does not affect the mayor because I run citywide, so the city limits are the territory for the mayor's position. But our six city council positions are elected from two districts, and as a result of the 2020 census, which was delayed due to COVID-19, we finally have the population statistics that we need, and that has necessitated a redistricting of the city. The council will make the appropriate adjustments to the district lines by home rule amendment under the home rule authority that the council has to draw its own district lines. But the council did ask to call for a special public hearing tonight to receive comments on the city's election district lines. For the benefit of those in the audience, I would point out, we have three maps, to my left, your right. The large map here at the dais is actually, I think, the most helpful map because it shows the proposed District 1 and District 2 lines, and the hashed areas of District 2 are the areas of the city that were formerly in District 1 that will be moved into District 2. And the reason that District 2 is having to grow in geography is because based on the census, there was about a 2,000-person differential from, basically, there were too many people in District 1, not enough in District 2. So we're having to move approximately 2,000 people in order to be in compliance with the one-person-one-vote rule that the U.S. Supreme Court says applies to every legislative district except the United States Senate. Everything else has to meet the one-person-one-vote rule. If you look over on the far wall, you can see on the left the current District 1/District 2 map, and then on the right is the proposed District 1/District 2 map. The larger map here in front of the dais is just trying to be more helpful by showing the hashtag area. So with that context, we are here tonight to receive comments on the city's election district lines. Ms. Kelsey, anything to add?
Yes, sir. I'd just say that public hearing has been properly advertised. At this time, we wouldn't take any comments.
Okay. Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to speak? I'll ask Kevin Littlefield to come forward. Kevin, if you will, identify yourself and if you'd like to, your position, and make any comments you'd like to.
Is this thing on?
I think so. Oh, no.
It is.
Well, I guess I'll just try to talk loud. I think everybody here knows me. I'm Kevin Littlefield. I am the chairman of the Troup County Democratic Party, and I just wanted to come up here and say that this was a situation that made no one happy, with Mr. McCamey passing away and the situation that occurred with the election coming up in November. It didn't make anyone happy, but I honestly think, Mr. Mayor, that you and the council have done the best job that could be done with the situation as it was. Personally, I put out the information, I've sent this out to everybody on the Democratic side of the House, and I'm taking it from the people here tonight that they're in agreement with it. So if somebody complains to me about what we have here later, my ears are going to be closed, and you won't hear any complaints from me about it because I'm assuming they're good with it if they're not here. I want to thank you and Councilman Gaskin for coming to our meeting and discussing the issue and putting the word out to everybody in the town. I honestly think that as long as everybody sees what's going on, that they understand the situation that we have. I also want to thank Councilman Arrington for accusing himself in the contentious vote we had over the Vernon Road districting because that made the council fair with, you know. And I just want to say, I think under the circumstances, we're good, you know. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Chairman Littlefield. Appreciate you inviting me and Councilman Gaskin to your meeting to share because one of the, understanding that political redistricting in most places is very hotly contested and very difficult and very challenging going into this, I wanted to make sure that there were no questions could be asked about the process, that everything was transparent and above board and open and fair. And part of that was communicating with you as well as, I had similar communication with Mike Meredith, the chairman of the local NAACP chapter, to make sure that there, and also with Helen Rice, the chairman of the Republican Party, your counterpart, to make sure that there was no, even though city council runs nonpartisan, and city council elections and mayor are nonpartisan, I felt like y'all were some of the more politically active and interested groups and wanted to make sure that we shared all of the information and made it available to you. So I appreciate your comments and I appreciate your assistance in getting the word out. Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers would like to be heard on the proposed districting map? Okay, seeing none, I'll declare that public hearing closed. So for everyone's benefit, we will have a first reading tonight on this proposed home rule amendment, but no action items tonight. We will take final action in two weeks at our May the 10th meeting. That's when the map will actually be adopted. And to Chairman Littlefield's point, after the conclusion of this redistricting process in two weeks, then the council will be able to call for a special election to fill the unexpired term of Councilman McCamey, and that will be held in conjunction with the November ballot. So there will be some more announcements coming out about that, probably in either late May or early June, but much in plenty of time to make sure that we get on the ballot and that the voter registrar is, the registrar's office is able to update their map to correctly reflect the voting lines for the November election. Okay. We will move on to delegations, and I'm delighted to have the members of the LaGrange Youth Council with us tonight, and I'll call on Adam Spees to come and make some preliminary remarks. I think we have some presentations from the council members, and then some presentations we'll make to them.
That's correct. Hello, Mayor and Councilor. I'm Adam Spees. I'm an advisor for the LaGrange Youth Council. I've worked for the city for three years, and for three years I've been helping out with youth council under the guidance of Katie Van Shure. We've had some fantastic and amazing students, of course Zoe, I'll call her out, but in general, some amazing students come through youth council. But I will say, without question, this year, we have had the most successful year of youth council that we've ever had, and I'm really excited to work with these students, to let them tell you what we've been able to accomplish, and hopefully keep youth council getting better and better. So I will let them speak for themselves, and I will start off with our chairperson, Millie Criswell.
Hi, I'm Millie Criswell. I'm the chairperson of the LaGrange Youth Council. This year, the LaGrange Youth Council has accomplished so much through the passion and willingness of the students, as well as the help from our advisors, Adam Spees, Katie Van Shure, and Jeremy Andrews. At the beginning of this year, our students voted on three issues that were important to us based on our passions and what we felt would best serve the LaGrange community. And we decided to focus on three main subjects: mental health, mentorship, and sustainability. Aside from these accomplishments, the juniors and seniors from across the city of LaGrange that make up our youth council have participated in citywide litter pickups and attended city council meetings throughout this year in order to gain a better understanding of how local government functions. We have also heard from various department heads from the local government at our meetings this year to learn about how much work goes into the day-to-day operations of our city, and we have gained a much better understanding as to why LaGrange is such a great place to live. We are also fortunate to be able to participate in a team-building exercise this year by going to an escape room this past December, and we also took a field trip to the State Capitol Building in Atlanta this March to learn more about the state government. We were able to tour the Capitol Building in a meeting from the Georgia State Senate and meet state officials. Additionally, the council vice chair, Addie Island, and I were fortunate to attend the Georgia Cities United Summit in Atlanta this past January to meet with other youth councils from across the state and gain valuable leadership skills during sessions throughout the weekend. This opportunity has made me appreciate our youth council and realize all of the accomplishments we have been able to make this year in order to give back to the community and express our appreciation to the city of LaGrange. And now I'd like to invite Cindy Edelson, the committee chair for the Mentorship Committee.
Hello, my name is Cindy Edelson, and I'm the chair of the Mentorship Committee. The goal of this committee was to give young children encouragement for their future. This year, we decided to work with the Boys and Girls Club. We planned an ice skating event at Sweetland on Ice for the children of the Boys and Girls Club. Each youth council member got two kids and hung out with them throughout the night. We got to know them by asking questions while skating, playing games, and eating pizza. All the kids were so grateful. They constantly thanked us for having them and asked when they'd get to come back again. We were able to make a great connection with the kids. A little girl saved me a seat, which was so special and showed that we were truly making a connection with the kids. All the kids were so curious about youth council and said that they wanted to join when they are older. Our event was so successful, Ms. Katie decided to make them join.
I'd like to invite Devin.
My name is Devin Dentz, and I am the committee chairman for sustainability of LaGrange Youth Council. I am very honored to receive this leadership role to not only represent the LaGrange Youth Council, but to also represent the Cayman Park community as a young black man who strives to become a leader, to inspire others. In honor of Patricia Underwood, a great service leader for the Cayman Park community, we have started the Ice Sweat Green fundraiser to support the Cayman Park Community Project Patch Garden. In honor for Underwood's great dedication for the community, we have raised $1,200 for the garden. I thank the LaGrange Youth Council and my community service manager, Dr. Robert Tucker, for constructing me into becoming a leader and showed me how valuable professionalism is. When I attend Morehouse, the college that construct black men into intelligent leaders, I'll endeavor to become the greatest activist/humanitarian who strive to bring hope and faith to those who are in need of conviction. I would like to hand this check over to the Cayman Park community member, well, the community service manager, Dr. Robert Tucker.
Katie, bring him to the front, bring him to the front right here. Bring him to the front right here.
Yeah, let me show this check. I'd just like to say a word.
Absolutely, Dr. Tucker. I will always invite you to the microphone. Thank you for your service.
You know, Devin, when I first saw Devin, I didn't know what to expect. But I'll tell you one thing, I am so proud of this young man. You know, to get a person out of Calumet of his caliber and the work he's doing, and it's not, I thought it would be short-lived. No, it's going to go on and on and on. And he's going to my alma mater, he's going to Morehouse, and he's going to bring a lot of good things to LaGrange, and I am so proud of him. This is just a wonderful, this check will go to buy seeds, plants, whatever we need for the garden on Hind Street. The products that come from that garden will be given to the community free. And we're working on it, we've got some good people working with it, and we're just having all kind of great things to happen over there. God is good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker.
I would also like to thank the community members, and I would also like to introduce Riley Whitlow, the committee chairman for the mental health.
Hi, my name is Riley Whitlow, and unfortunately, unlike our other committee chairpersons tonight, my project has not come into fruition just yet. Next week, though, on May 2nd, my committee is planning on, sorry, my committee is planning on holding a mental health movie night where we will have free popcorn and an opportunity for members of our community to come and ask mental health professionals questions because I believe that greater communication and understanding is pivotal in resolving the mental health crisis of youth today. Mental health is a reoccurring topic that we have seen as being important for the LaGrange Youth Council, and I've carried on that legacy through my work this year. We will have stress balls, free popcorn, and an opportunity to ask questions. Our movie will be on May 2nd at 6:00 p.m., and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name is Addie Island, and I'm the vice chair for the LaGrange Youth Council. I just want to start off and say thank you all. Thank you all for believing us and giving us a shot, and thank you for our leaders for... Where are they? There they are. Thank you, guys, for helping us do so much. I've been a part of LaGrange Youth Council for two years, and I think I've done more in these past two years than I've done in 17 years. As you can tell, we've had an awesome year with what we have done. We've covered topics that I didn't even know we could cover in such a short time. We like to reach out and give y'all the opportunity, if you know any youth, rising sophomores, juniors that are interested in LaGrange Youth Council and want to make a change, to email Adam Spees. And we'd also like to invite y'all to our taco dinner across the street at Visit LaGrange and get to know some of us and let us tell you all about our projects. So thank you, and I'll pass it over to Adam Spees.
As you can tell, we have a lot of impressive future leaders here with our youth council. Before we recognize specifically the seniors, I would like all of our youth council to stand, and I'd like to please give them appreciated and give a clap. And now we'd like to specifically recognize the mayor and city manager.
And before we do that, Adam, let me just say, and I know I speak for the council and I'll give them an opportunity as well if they want to add anything, but this is very impressive. I mean, we appreciate all that you have done, and we can tell that there has been a lot of hard work and a lot of effort, particularly in the projects that you have described, that you have completed, and the ones that are underway. And so it's certainly what we had envisioned for the youth council when we first conceptualized this a number of years ago, that we would try to find ways to engage with the juniors and seniors in LaGrange, in the high school students in LaGrange, and look for, give you an opportunity to share with us, interact with us, and specifically to address issues that were on your mind, because that's what we do as the mayor and council. That's the model for us. We find issues that we may have a specific passion about, bring it to the group, discuss it, flesh it out, and then look for leaders in the community to undertake specific initiatives. And so it's a great model, and I appreciate all the hard work that y'all have put into it, and wish the seniors who are going to be graduating this year, and I'm sure you're counting down the days, wish you all the best as you move on to the next chapter in your lives, and appreciate the service that you have provided to the city of LaGrange, to your fellow students, but all 31,000 residents of LaGrange benefit from the work that you have done and will continue to do. So very appreciative of that, and I'll see if the council would like to add any comments.
I am just so overwhelmed by you guys, and I don't think you realize how much I appreciate you guys. Number one, thank you for the stress ball. I mean, really, this is a stressful job, and we need it. The other thing is, you know, when you guys took the Boys and Girls Club out to go ice skating, that was a beautiful gesture, and I know most of you are leaving, some of you are staying, but the mention about the kids wanting to come back, and here's where I get real serious with you guys, they're not coming back. We don't have a Boys and Girls Club anymore because it's adults, we screwed it up, flat out. So I'm challenging you guys, resurrect it, bring it back, because I know you can do it. Don't leave it to the adults to do the right thing because we've jacked this world three ways, then there are rocks from the sun, okay? We messed up. I'm asking each and every one of you, put it in your mind to bring the Boys and Girls Club back to LaGrange-Troup County area, and thank you for everything you've done thus far.
Thank you, council. Yes, any other council?
I would like to just say-
As a father of a former youth council member, or are you speaking?
I am. Again, thank you, Meg, Katie, Adam, for what y'all do for the youth. I firsthand knowledge that it's a benefit to some of the children, if not all, and so I appreciate it, I support it, glad you thought of it, whoever did. Thank you.
I'd just say thank you to each one of you that put in time and effort. It's definitely appreciated, and hopefully y'all know someone that might step up and take your position next year.
To Councilman Gaskin's comment about some of y'all, maybe all of you will be moving away for college or jobs or other opportunities, but certainly we hope that you have a fond place in your heart for LaGrange, and will, many of you will want to return to LaGrange at some point. I know that's something that most seniors don't think they will do, but I can sit here and look across the stage, and with the exception of Councilman Gaskin, who we relocated from New York City to LaGrange, the rest of us grew up in LaGrange and are still here and still serving, and the same certainly applies to my classmate, Katie Van Shure, LaGrange High Class of '91. So I think we have, because Dr. Edmonds is not here tonight, so we've got, sitting at the dais, we've got three LaGrange High graduates and only one Troup graduate, but we all grew up here and came back here and continue to serve, and I think that's a great opportunity, which is probably not something that most seniors envision, but it may very well come to fruition, and I would encourage you to consider that appropriate time. Dr. Gordon, do you have anything to add?
Nothing really. It'd be hard to top all these other comments, but we do see the group come through every year several times, and it is always impressive. So I don't mean to say that it hasn't always been impressive, but we see some special talent in this group tonight and appreciate you being here and letting us get a little glimpse into what you're doing. Thank you.
Adam, I'll turn it back over to you, and you want me and Meg to-
Our mayor and city manager could present our fantastic seniors with their certificate of completion and our keys to the city.
Okay. Kate Aspel. Yeah, let's applaud.
Maybe get them in the net lumps.
Okay. Millie Criswell. Okay. And for more photography, if I can ask all of the seniors to come forward and join me and the council here. I'm going to come up there, I'm going to come up there.
Grab your certificates, real quick.
Do you also want to grab these?
Oh, you want, you want. Sorry.
One, two, three, look here. Count of three, look here, one, two, three. And the, one, two, three. Any parents want to take pictures?
They were allowing you to get them the big one. That's what I always do.
I just got one question.
Okay, yeah.
Does your key actually work? I never even get a key.
Okay, well, that's great, and thank you again, and we look forward to having tacos with you shortly. We will move on with the agenda, and I will turn to council members to see if any council members have anything they would like to report tonight.
No reports.
No report.
Not a.
Okay. City manager report, Ms. Kelsey.
I just have one tonight, Mayor. We have had some interest in two parcels that the city owns, and we'll just take these one at a time for a vote, if that's okay with the council.
That sounds good.
The first property is located off Callaway Church Road. It's 1.5 acres. City staff would recommend establishing a minimum bid of $152,000 on this property. We have had it appraised, and that's what that appraisal is. So at this point, if the council is interested in moving forward, you would declare this property surplus, and we would advertise for sealed bids with establishing that minimum bid at $152,000.
Motion to declare property a surplus?
Second.
I have a motion of second to declare surplus, accept bids with the stated minimum. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
And then another tract of land we've had some interest in is located out off, actually behind some properties on Hudson Road, kind of bordered by Upper Class Bridge Road. It's a 10-acre tract. Again, staff would recommend establishing a minimum bid on this property of $73,000, which again is the appraised value that the city has received. Again, if the council wants to move forward, you would declare this property surplus, and you would move through the process to take the bids.
Motion to declare property a surplus?
Second.
I have a motion of second to declare the property surplus, accept sealed bids with the stated minimum. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
That completes my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kelsey. Under resolutions, we also have some other items that we would like to declare a surplus.
Yes, sir. You have a list attached to your agenda materials. The majority of what you see on this list are vehicles that, as we like to say at the city, are plum worn out. So staff would recommend that you declare these surplus. We would post these on our God deals website for sale, so we would request that you declare them.
Motion to declare property a scrap metal, I mean, surplus?
Second.
I have a motion of second to declare surplus, the personal property items. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. We will move on to first reading of ordinances, and I have an ordinance modifying the two election districts of the city.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the charter so as to modify the boundaries of the two election districts of the city to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and provide separability and for other purposes.
And I also have, under second reading of ordinances, an ordinance modifying the industrial parking ratio requirements.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning ordinance of the cities so as to modify the minimum parking table requirements for industrial and agricultural uses to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. There, a second.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And finally, I have a second reading of an ordinance naming certain streets in Crossvine Village subdivision.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code so as to name certain streets in Crossvine Village subdivision to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Ms. Van Schor, would you like to close us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Good news, we're tonight, of course, our youth council is graduating. Congratulations to our seniors. Monday, May 2nd, we do have our Mental Health Awareness Month event, May 2nd. Doors open at 6:00, and we also invite each and every one of y'all to our fellowship next door with our youth council, our graduation, our taco bar. So we welcome y'all next door to Visit LaGrange.
Okay. We stand adjourned.